This time, I'll call the meeting in Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. I'd move us to Agenda Item Number Two. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council staff recommends to remove Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five related to the high school agreement. It's actually also included as Item Number Twenty-Two under the consent agenda, so that's a recommendation is to remove that Twenty-Five. The actual background information's included in Twenty-Two.
Okay. Any other changes to that agenda? Now, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Remove.
No second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by John to approve. We'll move to a vote.
Can we do a voice vote? I didn't get into this.
Do you need to log in?
I did the last meeting.
Oh, sorry. We can, uh...
Can I? Can we do that? There what? Yeah.
First, go over join meeting. Sorry.
Skip over join meeting?
Sorry, we're gonna get... I accidentally told Elaine to log out. We'll get her logged in and then we'll have her join the meeting.
Okay, so... We'll pause here for just a second while the electronic meeting software gets set up. Always good to get this out of the way on a non-consequential item, so...
Not like anybody's waiting here.
Yeah, that's right. No pressure.
What does that mean? Yeah. So, we did already?
So, Kathy, while you're working on that, I'm gonna move to a voice vote on this item and then you can continue to work on. We'll move to the next item, which does not require a vote. Is that okay? So, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
As amended, anyone oppose, that motion passes. So, we will move then to Agenda Item Number Three.
I'm sorry.
Agenda Item Number Three, this is a award of excellence to Officer Eric Clinkin and Officer Ryan Hoffman. So, as I ask Sergeant Winker to come forward, I'll come around. We'll have the presentation. I'll ask City Administrator Ben Martig to kind of read the description and why this is here. So, we'll take a few minutes in making this important presentation.
Thank you, members, the mayor and city council, members of the public. The city of Marshall is proud to present a special recognition of excellence to two of our employees, Patrol Officer Eric Clinkin and Patrol Officer Ryan Hoffman. Their actions directly led to the arrest and convictions of Derek Hexum, Kyle Westallink, and Theodore Como for a series of serious crimes committed in April of 2015. Officer Clinkin was attentive to his duties as a police officer, to be out on patrol and looking for suspicious activities and criminal violations. Routine patrol and traffic enforcement not only lead to compliance with traffic laws, but have both a deterrent effect to other crime and may lead to the identification of suspects of violations more serious than the initial traffic violation. Officer Ryan Hoffman was quick to back up and assist Officer Clinkin on what could have been a dangerous action, but unfortunately did not escalate. According to William F. Klumpf, Jr., Assistant Attorney General of the State of Minnesota, the big break in the case came when Officer Clinkin initiated a traffic stop of Kyle Westallink's vehicle because he was driving with revoked license with Theodore Como as a passenger. Officer Ryan Hoffman assisted Officer Clinkin and did some of the questioning of Kyle Westallink at the scene. A search of the trunk of the vehicle based upon probable cause of having seen drug paraphernalia in the car resulted in discovery of five firearms and was upheld after contested omnibus hearings. Assistant Attorney General William F. Klumpf, Jr. went on to say that if not for the discovery of the evidence, which later resulted in confessions by Como and Westallink, which also implicated Hexum, their series of serious crimes might well have gone unsolved. Family, friends, and the community were devastated by this senseless crime. We wish to recognize Officer Clinkin and Hoffman for their extraordinary levels of performance that led to the arrest and conviction of these violent offenders.
Okay, I just wanted to say a little bit here, you know, I don't know if you folks are aware of it, but Marshall police officers make three to 500 traffic stops a month. So, it's pretty difficult to remain diligent and be looking for evidence in every vehicle that you stop, especially evidence that may turn into a more serious crime such as this. But that's exactly what Eric Hoffman and... or Eric Clinkin and Ryan Hoffman did in this instance. So, they turned this case into evidence that we'd be able to solve and that sort of thing. So, I think it is... Lost my train of thought there getting their names mixed up. But, no, it's an honor and a privilege to work with both these guys. They're always out there doing 110 percent, so congratulations, guys.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna call for five minutes. I held on March 26, 2016, the minutes of the local Board of Appeal and Equalization. That was held on April 4, 2016, as well as the minutes of the work session that was held on April 5, 2016. So, the council does have the minutes of all those meetings. Are there any corrections to note?
I'll move the minutes with the noted correction. It's been passed out.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
I'm staying because I was not at the one meeting.
Motion passes with one abstention. Agenda Item Number Five. Agenda Item Number Five, consider the request for a street closure for Reinhardt Food Service for the company truck rodeo event. So, this will be a public hearing. Following the public hearing, then we'll consider the application for the private use of the public streets. So, I'll call on Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the second, I believe, annual truck rodeo for Reinhardt Foods. And what they do is they requested to block off the street essentially from the railroad tracks to the opening to Ace Hardware. And they use it for truck maneuvering and a family event. So, it went well. Last year, we received no adverse comments at our office, and the hearing is for anyone who wanted to come and give comments one way or the other, so we recommend approval.
Okay. Any input as part of this public hearing from the council or any member of the audience that's here to speak as part of this public hearing? Glenn?
I was thinking it was the third year that...
Yeah, it could be the third year.
I think it is, yeah.
Yep.
The cost associated to this would be $300, then? Is that what it estimated at, or...
Yes, and generally, the council has either approved or waived that fee.
And is that something we normally do with others in a similar type of situation, or...
More so for public events, like Sounds of Summer or something like that. But it is a family-related activity as well.
Any other discussion or input as part of the public hearing?
I'm gonna just address that a little bit, and I think part of that $300 waiver that is because it promotes safety within the organization, you know, for all the drivers and their employees, et cetera, so, you know, I think it's pretty minimal.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Then, we would then consider the second action, that would be to approve the street closure as was explained in the public hearing from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 30.
I'll move the recommendation.
Motion by Larry, seconded by David. Discussion?
The reason I brought up the $300, I just wanted to make sure we're treating all businesses the same and that they all have equal treatment, so...
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Six. Agenda Item Number Six, Sounds of Summer, we'll have a public hearing related to the private use of the public streets in the parking lot. So, once again, I'll call on Glenn Olson to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the annual event for the Sounds of Summer. It's a very well-attended and great community festival. And the applicant is also here, if you have any questions of Mr. Labatt. But we would certainly recommend approval after a whole new public hearing.
Any input from the council or any members of the audience as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm... Second.
Motion by David, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion does pass. Well, now, consider the action that would approve the use of the private... of the public streets for this event and the parking lots.
All three in one?
No. We'll take motion number two first.
I'll move motion two.
Motion by Glenn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John to approve the private use of the public streets and the parking lots for the Sounds of Summer, August 18th to 21st, 2016, as requested. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. And then, the final action would be approve the Sounds of Summer Parade to be held Saturday, August 20th, subject to the MinDOT approval.
I'll make that motion.
Recommendation?
Motion by John, seconded by Larry. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Russ, anything you want to say about Sounds of Summer? Everything's ready to go?
Everything's going along. Thank you very much for your cooperation in the city's health. You couldn't do it without children. It's a great year. We keep moving along.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Seven. Agenda Item Number Seven, consider the request for the approval to purchase the rotary striping mower for the southwest amateur ball fields. Glenn, are you gonna start this and then Preston?
No, he can just operate it.
We do have the recommendation, and if there's any questions on the recommendations, Preston Stendrude from our Parks Department can address those questions. Questions?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this purchase for the amateur ball fields is for mowing and doing striping on the fourth to maintain that performance fields, similar to Legion. However, at Legion Field, we use what's called a reel mower, like on a golf course. Extremely high maintenance costs as far as sharpening blades and stuff like that, or the reels. And this is kind of a new thing that's come out in the last two, three years. It uses a regular blade like we have on our commercial mowers that we can sharpen ourselves, but still does the striping and allows us to mow it down to like an inch. So, I would recommend approval. We did meet with the Equipment Review Committee. I went to specifications back in February. There was no suggested changes, and no local dealers can provide this piece of equipment, so all prices are state contract pricing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I may just comment too, just as a matter, just make sure you're clear too on the procedures. Is typically, we have the council approve the minimum specifications, so in effect, you're kind of doing them both tonight. The committee's already reviewed them. Since there was no local providers, we kind of skipped the process of kind of going out separately. So, an alternative action, if you wanted to wait and approve the specs first, but basically, it'd be included with that. Just as a side note, this one of the three, the pieces of equipment that are proposed tonight, this one in particular is, although it's shown as an expense to the account shown, this was proposed to be part of that equipment that would be included in what will be funded, reimbursed back through the abatement bond. So, you have a later agenda item related to some initiation of some extra financing on the ball field project. I will be bringing forward at the next council meeting a reimbursement resolution in a larger dollar amount that would also include this piece of equipment within that to be included in those bond funds. So, it was a matter of timing, kind of getting geared up with getting it ordered with other mowing that was needed out in that area. So, we wanted to initiate it now for this particular one rather than waiting. So, I recommend approval of as presented.
Questions? Not entertain... No, go ahead. John?
The, I guess, just kind of a question of the used... I guess, first of all, what would be the expected life of one of these mowers as compared to the demo that is 142 hours? I'm not recommending that one.
I would guess 10 to 12, maybe even up to 15 years, since it's not gonna be used like eight hours a day like a regular commercial mower. I think our reel mower now that we use for Legion is eight years old and has 500 or 600 hours on it or something like that, so...
Okay. Is there a reason for not recommending the demo, 142 hours?
I just didn't feel for being three years old that the cost savings was like $2,000, that it was substantial enough versus if it would have been like a 2014 or 15 with 140 hours on. And he did mention that it has been stored in his warehouse for a year to a year and a half, so I was a little nervous about that, too.
Okay.
I'll move the recommendation.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eight. Agenda Item Number Eight, consider the approval of the purchase of used Zamboni ice finisher for the Red Baron Arena and Expo Center. Once again, we have the recommendation before us. Preston, any details you want to add?
I don't know. I guess the main thing here that we feel substantial cost savings, buying a machine that, I mean, it's 15 years old or so. It does have new batteries and a new smart charger that'll come with, similar to the new Zamboni that came in a couple of weeks ago. It's been fully refurbished. The conditioner is new. It's been sandblasted and painted. And it does only have a 60-day warranty, but I'm not too worried since it's been refurbished. Like I said, it's about a $60,000 cost savings versus buying new. I would note that the dealer would recommend trading in like five years when that battery shot due to the high cost of the replacement batteries, $10,000 to $12,000. And he said he won't get that back out of the trade, so this will let us offset the equipment too for... in our capital improvement plan, instead of buying two Zambonis every time we have to trade them in, so...
Okay. Thank you, Preston. Questions?
So, this is the second Zamboni we're gonna have. We bought one for around $135,000, is it? And so, the total cost of both is about $199,000, then?
Yep. In that $135,000, there was an edger in there too for $6,500 or something like that, which we only need one of those, but that was included on there, so...
And I don't...
Close to that memo.
I don't recall, but, you know, in the old ice arena, who owned the Zamboni?
The Hockey Association owns the current Zamboni, and it's propane, which we can't use in the new facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, recommendation? Motion by Larry, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Elaine. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Nine. Agenda Item Number Nine, consider the approval of the purchase of electric forklift for the Red Baron Arena and Expo Center. Again, we have the recommendation. Preston, any details you want to add?
Nope. Other than for expo takedown and the dashboard setup and takedown, this will be a very crucial piece of equipment. We're actually at the point now where all the stuff needs to go in the mezzanine, and we have no way to move it. This dealer, the low proposal, said he'll have a demo unit delivered to us as early as tomorrow to keep for 16 weeks until we get our new one for no charge. These are both, again, government pricing packages, and no local dealer can provide them. I checked with everybody. So, recommend approval to Hurkey Lift Sioux Falls.
Okay. Questions? John?
We have use for this anyplace else, or is it ability to move around?
It could be used in other facilities. You'd just have to trail it around. It's got the non-marking tires, so we don't leave the black marks on the floor. So, you wouldn't want to drive it on gravel or anything like that. But if as far as like wastewater needed out in their shop or something, it could be trailered around.
All right. Thanks.
I just have a quick question here. I noticed that the one is a 3,500-pound capacity or 3,500-pound capacity, and the other one is 4,000, and the one you're recommending is 3,500. So, is one more the standard, and is there any... Is it worth it getting a 4,000-pound capacity or not?
No, and I checked into that with the high price now on that 31. I can't remember the exact dollars. And he said if we went down to 3,500, he would take like $250 off. The big expense is you bump up to the next size charger, and then you need a bigger battery. So, your maintenance costs are gonna be a lot more in the long run, so...
Thank you. Any other questions?
Move the recommendation.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. Agenda Item Number Ten. Agenda Item Number Ten is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen on the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, consider the reimbursement resolution for the Marshall Hotel project. Consider the reimbursement resolution for the roll fire pumper. Consider the adoption of the resolution designating the polling locations, authorizing the appointment of the election judges, and setting their rate of pay. Consider the approval of two temporary 3.2% malt liquor licenses for the Marshall Baseball Association to declare the public works equipment as surplus property. The vacation of the utility easement, Lot One, Block One, Wilkie Miller Busing, Seventh Edition, Gregory S. Taylor, and receive the petition to vacate and call for a public hearing. Call for the public hearing on the move-in dwelling to 1121 East Fairview Street. Consider the approval of the Spirit of Community Sculpture Agreement. Consider the approval of the fee resolutions, amendments for the Red Baron Arena and Expo fees. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the police department. Consider and approve the resolution approving the proper city officials to execute the warranty de transferring the former liquor store property pursuant to the terms and conditions of the earnest money contract previously approved by the council. Consider the amendments to the construction reimbursement agreement as presented. And then, finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
I would like to remove 11, 18, 19, and 21.
Okay. 11, 18, 19, 21. Any other item?
I'd like to remove item 13, please.
We'll pause for a second until... Any other item? That's it. Okay, so then that...
The remaining consent agenda?
Motion by Larry to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 19, which was Agenda Item Number 11. So, this, consider the reimbursement resolution for the Marshall Hotel project. Glenn?
Me?
You asked for it.
I think the... Right now, we have it set at $100,000, and we're increasing it to $200,000. And is there a reason we have to do it now? I mean, are we anticipating that we're gonna need $200,000? Or why are we taking the action right now?
Thank you. Thank you, honored members of the city council. The initial, the largest portion of the proceeds that went towards this project was a $75,000 escrow that went as part of the valuation that was determined for that property. Other expenses, primarily legal fees. I don't have a breakdown with me this evening, but it has creeped up and I believe has gone over the $100,000 threshold. So, we caught that through finance and have determined that we should probably bump that up accordingly. I can work on a detail report if the council would like to see that report, but we're not necessarily anticipating it up to the $200,000 level, but just felt that it was a number that gives us some flexibility going forward and anticipate that in the fairly near future, we might have some cleanup bills like dumpsters and things. We're waiting for some more direction from the attorney to allow that to occur. But those would be the kind of the other items where we'd expect some other little expenses kind of coming forward at some point in the relative near future.
And under the statute, the city has to pay all of the commissioners' fees that have been appointed at an hourly rate of $250 an hour. For the commissioners, we have to pay for an appraisal to be performed by the former owner. We have to pay up to $5,000 of that fee. Plus, you know, depending upon what the commissioner's order or the court orders as the valuation, you may have to pay some additional money there as well. I think it's just prudent to have kind of a cushion available should the need arise in the future. And there will be significant cleanup expense to be incurred in the near future.
Part of my concern has to do with just the use of TIF funds in general. There have been various arguments against TIF funding, and the fact that it favors some businesses over others, and it's been misused in the past. So, I have concerns with TIF funding.
Okay. Any other questions about this agenda item? If not, what is the wishes of the council on the reimbursement resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Motion by John, is there a second? Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Discussion?
When I, when I said the, the misuse of TIF funds in the past, it, I'm not pointing at the city of Marshall. I'm, I'm talking about other cities here. I wanna make that clear.
And, and for the newspaper, I made, it's not two-hundred-and-fifty dollar per hour commissioner fees, two-fifty per day. So, just for that clarification.
Okay. Thanks for those clarifications. Are we ready to move to a vote?
We're getting logged in here.
Okay, we'll move to a vote. The motion passes. Agenda item number twenty, which was agenda item number thirteen. Uh, can, the resolution that would designate the polling locations, authorize the appointment of election judges and setting their rate of pay. Let me, David, I'm gonna turn to you in a second, but the, um, um, Tom and/or Jane, the action on this timeliness of this, does this need to be done tonight or in? I'll, you can look at, you can, uh, look that up and then I'll turn to David.
Thank you, Mayor, and colleagues. My concern with this is specifically the proposal to hold the 2016 elections at the SMSURA facility. I have a number of concerns which I expressed with some of you two years ago when this first was proposed. I have heard them now about the access to that facility. Given you some informal information about distances, the figure, combination of the layout of the facility, the location of significant parking, and the universities reported, if subject maybe, but apparent unwillingness to modify some of their facilities and parking arrangements, mean that the, the, the heavy majority of people using that polling place, and that'll be one-third of the, of the voters of this community, this November presidential election, the peak turnout, will have to walk a distance, as I paced out yesterday, of at least one-hundred-and-seventy steps for me and maybe more for a lot of them, from the nearest part of that dirt parking lot. The, uh, um, amount of handicap space is very limited, about four spaces along the south side of that Mustang Trail between the entry to the facility and where the primary parking lot is located. The, um, apparent inability or unwillingness of the university to make available the small staff parking lot, which is, is indeed very convenient to that, um, door to the building, or unwillingness or maybe it's an inability functionally to, um, make, um, to open the northwest corner, which would be very handy to the large parking lot. We've been lucky on election day weather. I have, I can't recall an inclement election, general election day since maybe two thousand. There's very light rain in the morning. Otherwise, we've been very lucky. That means one of these years, we're gonna have a rip snort on the second Tuesday in November. And if we have, if we're asking a third of the city's voters to walk that distance, recognizing a significant number are senior citizens who may have other mobility impairments, we're gonna have a mess on our hands. We're gonna have a lot of unhappy voters. And I think it would be wise for us, appropriate to be proactive and consider other options. I've suggested, among some of you, uh, particularly if the timing allows, that we consider, for example, the, the new amateur sports center. The, the distance from the nearest parking spaces to the front door there is about one-third of the comparable distances that we now have to work with at the RA facility. Gets a chunk of the community into that building when it's brand-new and I think is, among other things, has an intangible good-bill benefit. And I think, um, I, I think that would be a much better arrangement. And if for some reason that's not available, then I think we need, uh, the reasons I've stated, for staff to consider other options.
I'm, everybody makes some comments, it looks like?
On the, uh, on the first, uh, question of, um, timing of when the polling places need to, need to be identified, tonight or do we have any more time?
I had read somewhere where there's a ninety-day timeframe before the election that you have to identify the polling places. There's a lot of notifications and et cetera that have to be done when you do make the changes and, you know, suggesting to use the amateur sports center, you know, whether that's gonna be ready by time the election is, the primaries in, um, August, and the, um, general election is in November. I don't know if the facility's gonna be ready or available for us to use. I don't know if they've had other commitments for it. I don't know that, um, two years ago was the first time that we had used the, uh, sports center for, or the, or the, um, RA facility for a polling location. And the reason we hadn't moved from there, from the school to there was because of the safety, especially with the young children around at the Parkside School. We have worked very hard with the college and they have been very cooperative with us in using that facility. Parking was a concern and they, at the last election and this election, have agreed that the parking, uh, area right behind the college where, uh, staff supposedly parks, that they asked that they not park there in that parking lot that day, the days of the election, and that that parking lot be reserved for election, uh, people only. And it seemed to work quite well last time. And the other thing is if they need be, they can put on more parking or spaces for handicap parking, you know, depends upon what we need. But, you know, the college has been very cooperative from our standpoint in us getting that as a polling place. Like I say, two years ago was the first time that we had used that facility. You know, we had originally thought of using the backside of that facility, but the doors on the backside are only for you to exit, they are not doors for entering. To allow for people to even try and enter from the backside does not create a good, uh, flow for people when it comes to election time. If you have people coming in from all different angles at an election time, really, uh, creates a lot of chaos in the polling location. I guess we've made arrangements to use the college again this year and, like I say, with our experience the last time, they were very cooperative and we did find some things to change. And again, the college has been supportive of us in what we have asked for.
Mayor, can I follow up on part of that topic? Are you saying specifically that two years ago, at the general election, I'd say that we did make available that interior parking area? Okay, that's new information. Contrary to what I heard from at least a couple of people at this table about times. For a further follow-up, asking people not to park there is a lottery concept. Do we get from them a firm commitment that they will enforce that? I believe there are ways, I'd be able to, I'd be able to help with that or stay out of the way, I mean, it seems to me there are ways we can make that a meaningful, you know, uh, uh, I think that'd be crucial. The turnout's gonna be notably higher, but, you know, twenty-fourteen, we were lucky, the weather was very mild and even for midterm, the turnout was quite low by modern standards. So really, I'm, I'm glad for this new information. That wasn't, I'll say, the foremost test of this situation. Not, I, if I could put it this way, would be my wish that we have some firm communication with, primary's really not a problem, school's not in.
Yeah, August.
Could be. They make that a meaningful availability. And also, if they could work to find some ways, perhaps, uh, the, there's about, I'll say, eight or ten on-street, on-curd parking spaces along the north side of Mustang Trail, they could do a similar reservation or designation with those. But maybe carve out a few more handicap spaces on the south side. There's about four that are so marked and then there's a very long stretch of yellow curb with nothing at all. So if those could be made temporary handicap, if we do those three things and get a firm commitment from them, then I think this might work. That would be very important to me, to get this.
Like I say, is that we've worked with the scheduling office in the past and as far as we're concerned, they've been very accommodating to help us in getting the needs that we've asked for and.
You know, identifying the, you know, having that communication early and now, um, would also allow the, uh, kind of the education effort to go out that there, you know, that here there is a parking, you know, work, work in the parking, be had.
If I may, I endorse the, the idea of early communication, but I think maybe it would be useful if, um, city staff, scheduling office, and public safety all be at the same table, have a map, do a record if that's appropriate, all understanding the same opportunities. That would be doable. Then, appropriate community education, newspaper and other things, folks have an understanding about what is real, what isn't.
And if there was that, uh, that kind of roundtable conversation, if you'd be willing to be a part of that, you have, uh, interest in this and have talked this through.
Oh, for that matter, the councilman from Ward One, this is your baby after all. As appropriate. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Members of the council, the, um, I think one, and I, staff hadn't really vetted this, um, alternative of the Red Baron Arena and Expo, the, I think one of the concerns with the November election is, is whether the second sheet of ice would be up and operational at that time. I think the transitions kind of plant, we're kind of feeling that out. Mr. Wileaghi or Mr. Stenzrud might know kind of tentatively what they're looking at this year, but I think the October, kind of towards the end of October is about the time that they'd be looking at initiating it dependent upon the schedule because the existing facility, we're lucky to have the other rink so that when practice kind of typically starts, they typically put the ice up, uh, in October. So we have that other rink that will already have it on there, but I believe it was right around that time that the second sheet of ice was gonna get commissioned and, and presented. And there wouldn't be enough other meeting space in the facility to accommodate the election. So that would be the concern on that facility is to work that out.
Cross that bridge and come through, although I reserve, this wouldn't be a tournament on a Tuesday. It would be, like, a normal recreational team use, you know, the, the foot traffic would be probably smaller than what we're doing with the community. Most definitely. Thank you.
Okay. With that, um, I would entertain a motion on the resolution designating the polling locations, authorizing the appointment of the election judges and setting their rate of pay.
Also, I'm moving.
Motion by David, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
Just ask that, uh, this meeting get put together, that probably both of us from Ward One be notified and where the meeting time.
Very good. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Tom, would you wanna, uh, have a little conversation with Joe so he knows that his agenda item has already been acted on? You're welcome to stay, but. Okay. Agenda item number twenty-one, uh, consider the approval of the Spirit of Community Sculpture Agreement. Ben, are you gonna start with this and then Mr. Wileaghi? Ben?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, uh, this was pulled from consent agenda. I don't know if it's a financial question or it's related to the.
Okay, so, um, Glenn, did you, this one?
Okay. So my understanding then is we're, we're paying them fifteen hundred dollars per artist to prepare something for us so he can compare them then?
Yeah. Mr. Wileaghi's involved in the, uh, committee process, so he'll talk about that.
Mayor, City Council, um, that's correct. The, uh, process that we're using for the sculptors, it's a three-person that's been selected and each of them are given a fifteen hundred dollar stipend to prepare their, uh, model, if you will, their design element, and, uh, that's at our cost.
And, and then there's a seventy-five thousand dollar total budget for the, am I reading that right?
For the piece of art, correct.
For whatever they, and then where does that other twenty-five thousand come in then as far as, um, site design or, uh, site work?
That takes care of the base and all the landscaping and the others. It's about a forty-foot circle right now. It'll be down to a fourteen-foot circle and once that construction's taken, then we finish it off.
And, and that is in addition to the seventy-five then?
That is correct.
Okay.
John, do you have any comments? You're on this committee.
Oh, I think you've well explained it.
David?
Harry, this, this truck, this facility is subject to that one percent public guard requirement. Does that sound right?
It is where the state funds are utilized.
The state portion being what?
Uh, four-point-two-nine-eight million dollars.
Five million, one percent, uh, fifty, five percent. Pretty well maxing out on that.
Mm-hmm. Other, other questions?
Is this the only art item then?
No. We have the, uh, existing Fogarty print.
Right.
That was used before with the mural and that will hang in the building as well.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Okay. There's no other questions? What's, which is of the council?
Move the recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion by Larry, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number twenty-two. This was agenda item number nineteen. Consider the approval of the fee resolutions and amendment for the Red Baron Arena and Expo fees. Glenn, you had a question?
It was just my concern that, you know, our fees are lower than comparable facilities in our area.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move the recommendation.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. And agenda item number twenty-three, which was agenda item number twenty-one on the consent agenda. This is the resolution approving the proper city officials to execute the warranty deed transferring the former liquor store property. Glenn?
I had a, uh, I was gonna try and ask before the meeting, but I didn't have time. But, um, evidently there's something with the legal scripting that had to be changed and.
Right. The, the purchaser's attorney felt that the meets and bounds description created an ambiguous point that was not clearly defined. You know, two thousand eight feet east of a section corner. Didn't say ninety degrees east or whatever. So it was re-surveyed and a more current, accurate legal description was prepared. Now we need a resolution passed confirming that description so that it matches up with the description then on the deed. That survey was just completed last week, so now is the appropriate time to pass a resolution with the updated legal description to match the deed description and we can move to closing, probably next week.
I guess, when did we purchase that property and, and wasn't it a problem when we purchased the property?
Not in nineteen sixty-four, it wasn't.
Okay. There, okay.
Yeah. So, and, you know, there is forty years of clear title. There, there are a number of those statutes, but it's.
Okay.
Just easier to survey it and move on.
Okay. The, um, I, I noticed that, again, that there was, um, typical closing fees and costs and we sold it for two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Approximately how much were the closing costs then?
That had, let's see, well, there's the five percent Realtors' commission, then there's about five hundred dollars worth of survey fees. We have to pay eight hundred, over eight hundred dollars of, uh, commission, I'm sorry, of, um, deed tax. And then there'll be, um, title insurance commitment of probably another five hundred dollars, so fifteen thousand probably in closing fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion on the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Motion by Larry, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number twenty-four. Agenda item number twenty-four can, uh, consider and approve the resolution regarding the extension of the cable television franchise agreements through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen for both charter communications and clarity doing business as vast broadband. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall, we are operating under extensions of an expired, um, agreement already. Attorney Brian Grogan is representing, working with the city, trying to negotiate extended contracts. Clarity and charter have continued to pay pursuant to the existing agreements. There's, uh, there's a five percent fee that is paid based upon the subscriptions, plus there's a dollar fifty per month paid for the public access fee. Even though there really is no, no existing agreement, we've continued to receive the payments either quarterly or monthly as they. payments either quarterly or monthly as they continue to pay. There are ongoing discussions. We hope to have this wrapped up by the end of the year. Mr. Grogan is suggesting that we put an extension in place to continue the existing terms, and, and I think we're probably going to continue those existing terms on a new agreement as we move forward. 5% is the maximum, um, cables, cable fee that can be charged, so that's really not going to change. And then the, the peg fee, that'll continue pursuant to the existing agreement, a dollar 50 per prescriber per month. The peg fee yields probably about $70,000 a, a year to the, uh, and that's got to be used for capital improvements and can be used only for capital improvement. So, there is a long-term capital plan being put together that'll be discussed shortly. In fact, I think we're meeting on a next Monday to further discuss that capital plan. So, it'd be the recommendation to approve an extension through the end of this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Any other, any questions for Dennis? If not, is there a motion for the resolution regarding the extension of the franchise agreements?
I'll move the...
Motion by Elaine, seconded by David, or by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 25. Agenda item number 25, consider the amendment to, that was removed from the agenda. So, agenda item number 26, consider the approval of the resolution of support to apply for Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, uh, EA recycling grant. Ben, are you going to introduce this? And then I know we have a number of...
I think Mr. Weyloggi's been dealing with this issue.
Mayor and council, as you're well aware, we've been on a journey for, I believe, three, four years on the Green Step process to make Marshall, uh, greener community. I'll say it that way. And, uh, this is the next step in that process. Uh, we have, uh, ENACTUS with us tonight, and, uh, we also have Preston, who's been working with that committee, who, Tom Hoff is the main chair for our Green Step, which has a partnership with, uh, city, the, uh, school district, and the university. So, we're excited about this partnership moving forward. We've asked ENACTUS to make a commitment, uh, to help educate the community over the next three years as we move towards, uh, a greener community, and, uh, this grant application can help us make that next step. And composting has been the, they've done the research, and I certainly would have them come up and talk about the project, but again, this is the application process for that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Harry. Is there a spokesperson who wants to speak?
Gary, you want to?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council. Um, as Harry mentioned, this is a MPCA grant application. This is the first year that they've ever thrown funds at composting. Um, we're very excited about it because really the stars kind of all aligned at perfect timing for this project. Um, the day we had our meeting with all the key partners, which was the university, the Marshall Public Schools, the City of Marshall, and then the Green Step Committee. That day was a Friday. These grants got released on Wednesday. So, we were able to discuss that as a group. They were all, all very receptive in coming up with their action plan. Um, we've been working on this since early January, and we're really excited about, um, the opportunity to help the new ice arena become something that other communities can really model and replicate and just kind of set the standard for what a green community looks like and just be a leader for the region.
So, I'm going to have you stay at the microphone for just a second there, the, uh, and for the record, identify yourself. And then also, this is, uh, being broadcast on cable television, so this will be a chance for you to say just a little bit about what ENACTUS is. I think this group understands what ENACTUS is, but maybe some of the general public haven't heard of what that term is, so...
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Well, I'm Aaron Lang, and I'm the president of ENACTUS, and ENACTUS is a international nonprofit organization. We represent the SMSU chapter, and what we do is we create projects that are economically, environmentally, and socially sustainable, and we find needs in our community. We conduct what we call needs assessments, determine what those problems are, and then we take action. We develop plans with partners, with city leaders, and with business professionals. Obviously, what we do would not be possible without the support from folks like you guys, so we're very thankful that we have a supportive community. Um, we competed last year at the national exposition with 518 United States teams, and we were very fortunate to place top eight in the nation. Um, we're really excited about that. Um, we actually won our region this year in Chicago, Illinois, and we go on to the national exposition in St. Louis, Missouri in mid-May, and this is one of the big projects we're presenting on.
Very good. Thank you. Nice job. Questions the council has? David?
One, one procedural question. It's implied here on our resolution page. Instead, clearly I've missed it. Would the city be the fiscal agent for this grant?
That is correct, yep.
Other questions?
Um, what? I think that this is what we have, the application, right? And, um, I, I notice here as far as your duties or whatever is to develop a culture through education and so forth, um, so, other than that part of it, I mean, what other roles does your organization play? I mean, you're getting us all started and the application, uh, sent in and so forth, but, uh, with your organization, what do you do on a day-to-day or year-to-year basis then?
Absolutely. So, one of our big things that we try to focus on is not being the expert on everything because there's so many industry experts on there already knowing composting. Um, the subject matter expertise that's already out there has really helped us understand what composting is all about. Um, so on a year-to-year basis, our job is to ma, monitor the progress, to see, you know, implementing these new standards, how's it going? What's working? What's not working? Um, what adaptations need to be made? And that's where the partners come in because, um, at the public schools, I know that the janitorial staff has been instrumental in collecting data, um, in relation to the problem to really figure out what it is that we're dealing with. And our role is just to try to bridge all these partners and to find needs and then figure out the right people who need to be in the room to meet those needs.
And, and I notice there it's, it's for a three-year period till March 15th, 2019, so, um, I know college students come and go and, and, but your organization, you'll have members that'll continue to work on this for the full three years.
Yes. Actually, I'm getting old here. I'm a senior now, so I'm going to be done, unfortunately, but, um, sustainability is a huge part of our ENACTUS team. Um, our Sam Walton faculty fellow advisor, Doug Simon, is here this evening. Um, so he's kind of, the, the faculty advisor is the one who stays in year in and year out. Um, students do come and go, but as you can see from some of the matching funds of the grant, the ENACTUS endowment funds are part of the matching, so students will have scholarship dollars being allocated. Um, we recruit students in environmental science and areas that are relevant to composting that, um, will provide relevant work experience and help them become more employable upon graduation.
Um, I'm just curious as to how this will all work then, and they, we have receptacles and they deposit this, and then it's transported to Good Thunder then, and, um, is, is the city responsible for organizing all that, or, or who's responsible for telling them when to come to get materials and, and making sure? I mean, we're the fiscal agent, so we, we pay people evidently, and the 200,000 or the 250,000 is used for that, right? To, to transport these, the waste and, and materials?
Yeah, so the ultimate vision is to try determining if the feasibility of a fully functioning compost facility in Marshall is something we can do. Um, there is a lot of environmental, um, benefits that come with that. Um, just in our three-year pilot program, we're estimating that we're going to be diverting, um, potentially almost 1,000 vehicles worth of emissions off the road. So, in a city like Marshall with only 14,000 people, that's a really big number. Um, and also, if we can determine that feasibility, um, of having a fully functional site in Marshall, then for projects such as the new Red Baron Arena, that byproduct, that compostable fertilizer could be used for things like that. And then we don't have to buy that fertilizer, we don't have to be adding chemicals, um, as well as there's things like different grant funding we can apply for like this. Um, and there's just a lot of additional benefits that go with having a site in Marshall, but in order to appeal to someone who could actually do that or, um, determine solutions down the road, we need to know what our numbers look like in order to arrange that.
Okay. And, uh, just a couple of other items here. I, I noticed in the application, it says that a budget and expenditure table is attached. I, I don't think we have that. Is, is that something we would be looking at, or is, is that, that's part of the application, right? Is that missing, or is, is there, is there such a, a budget prepared already?
There is a budget prepared, and basically what is here is in kind from the community, and so it's all addressed to carrying out that three-year budget. So, it's, it's the grant money being expended in support of this project, Glenn.
I, I mean, do they have a certain amount of money budget for the receptacles and, and transportation and so forth?
Correct.
Okay. And then there, it also indicates there's an environmental outcome table attached, and I assume...
That's part of the grant process.
And, and is that something we could see too then as for the city?
Make sure that's set on.
Okay. Thank you.
I would be amiss if I didn't, uh, acknowledge Doug and ENACTUS and, uh, us going through this next level. We've had plenty of projects from, uh, ENACTUS in the past for a one-year project or a significant, uh, project of a short duration. So, this is a learning process for our community, and, and I would be remiss in not, uh, thanking ENACTUS for really having the energy. There's a lot of things going on in Marshall right now, and ENACTUS, along with Tom Hoff and the Green Step Committee, have worked really hard to keep the vision of Marshall becoming a greener community, and I, I thank them for that.
I, I do have one more question. I'm sorry about that, but, um, what about liability? Is there any concern as far as liability for the city with regard to this project?
I've, I've not been made aware of anything.
Not that I'm aware of. It's under like any other grant application that we supply, there'll be a contractor that is, uh, contracted for those services.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions?
It's, Mr. Lang, you're aware Mr. Weyloggi's retiring. You may want to bump up your resume.
Yeah, we're, we're sending a cake.
Yeah.
You know, uh, council and mayor, if you've got concerns about this activist group sticking around, you and I could do something about that in a waiting time.
(laughing).
Okay.
I was just thinking, maybe Mr. Weyloggi, if you're one of your employees, uh, three years, uh, next three years, I mean, that might be part of it, yeah?
Yeah.
So, uh, very good, and I, I commend your efforts, and, you know, you're a quality group, and I followed you for a number of years, and so, very good. Uh, if the council doesn't have other questions, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mayor, I'd be very pleased to, uh, make a motion to approve the resolution of support and grant application as submitted.
Motion, motion by John, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 27. Agenda item number 27 is to call for public hearing on the charter ordinance. Ben?
Thank you, honor members of the city council. Tonight's action being recommended is just the actual setting of the hearing, which would be May 9th at 6 o'clock PM, uh, is the recommendation. The city charter commission did meet on March 21st. The initiation of the proposed amendments relate to the change in duties related to the finance director and city clerk. The, as the council knows, that was a combined position in the city charter and ordinance as both, um, have many citations referencing a combined position with that. Uh, state statutes do allow those positions to be separated from each other, so they're not mandated to be one and the same. Uh, so as part of that process, we're recommending to break those, and that does require defining in what cases does the code relate to the finance director and what sections relate to the city clerk. Generally speaking, at least in the city charter section, which is the first part that's under review, we're not looking to necessarily change a lot of the descriptive in there. We like the city charter to be kind of higher level, and then the ordinances get into the greater detail. Um, so, for the most part, you'll see that the red line included in the draft just simply strikes out either or on those. We do have a couple of sections that we're recommending to, um, do some minor cleanup to, uh, that I'll talk about at the public hearing. If you had questions on them this evening, I could certainly get into that, but the city, uh, charter commission did pass a motion to recommend approval of that. One item just of, um, I guess, particular note, uh, I think's relevant is the previous, the combined position had the city council as the appointing authority for the position. Uh, currently under the city of Marshall, the division directors, um, and the city administrator are the positions appointed by the, uh, mayor and city council, and of course, when it's division directors, it's a little bit more of a review process kind of with staff, but ultimately the council does do that. The recommended language does leave the finance director with that elevated responsibilities, and I think an important key position is remaining, recommended to be appointed, but the city clerk one is being, uh, recommended to be appointed, uh, by the city administrator. So, that's one of the, um, items of note. There was another minor one related to the coding of purchases that really is dealt with at a purchasing policy level, so in our recommendation was too high, too, too much in the detail for a city charter to deal with. So, the full version of the charter was actually attached. We've actually drafted up the actual ordinance that really only narrows on the sections, but thought it would be good for you to, it might be confusing if we only showed those sections, so we included the entire section of that for this. So, um, with the timing under making a, uh, amendment under this process, we have to do the notices in a way that we're not, uh, in May 9th is the appropriate timing for us to meet the state statute requirements on publication, uh, so we will be doing that. It will be noted that there was one section that upon, uh, review after the charter commission met, that one of the references of a strikeout of public, of the finance director, we're actually recommending to switch to city clerk. We will deal with that at the public hearing and explain how to deal with that at that, at that time. I'm working with the city attorney's office and, um, Mr. Melo Brick, who will be presenting that at the public hearing presumably at the 9th of May, um, and I've been working on that. Other sections of the ordinance will be coming later, um, at a future time. Recommend approval of calling for the public hearing. I can answer any questions if there might be.
Apparently, that's notice you're not coming back on May 9th.
Not intending on doing that, nope.
All right. All right. Tom, you and I.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Any, uh, questions?
I noticed in there that, uh, it talks about the finance director performing duties as city treasurer, so he's, that's another formal title for the, the finance director and...
The state statutes, there aren't, I don't believe there's a lot of citations related to the treasurer under the state statutes, I haven't, um, but there is some reference to that, and so we need to have a defined treasurer, so that would fall under the duties of the finance director.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to call for this public hearing on the charter ordinance?
Remove.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Elaine. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 28. Agenda item number 28, uh, consider calling for a public hearing, uh, for the tax abatement bonds. Uh, this was, uh, reviewed by the Ways and Means Committee at their meeting, I believe it was yesterday, and they're recommending that the public hearing would be held at the next regular council meeting, April 26th. Any other comments or Ben, any further explanation or input from the Ways and Means Committee?
Thank you, honor, excuse me, members of the city council. The, uh, we did discuss a draft of this at the work, last work session that we held, and then the Ways and Means Committee did a meet as well. I did not give you an update, but they did, uh, vote for a recommendation of calling for the public hearing on a two-to-one vote. Uh, that, I did provide an update of the financing. Basically, I'll give a full, uh, presentation of, I don't want to get into that this evening. I gave a preliminary review with the Ways and Means. They will be having another follow-up meeting in advance of the council meeting on the 26th. Uh, tentatively, we've got that scheduled, but we'll be going through an explanation of how the instrument of tax abatement is utilized. The funding of the projects for the par value of the bond available for improvements, uh, locally would be related to, uh, the Ball Field project primarily is where most of the funds are going for, and then a couple of trail, uh, improvement projects that we have within the city, the Camden Regional Trail, and then the reconstruction of the one south of Aveira, and, uh, just as part of like Holy Redeemer, there's a public trail that kind of goes near that area that would be included in that as well. So, um, my intention is, is a more detailed explanation and full presentation to you at that meeting, and simply tonight is to call for the public hearing related to that financing. So, I'd recommend approval, but if you'd like to get into any of the details, I can try and answer any of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Input from the Ways and Means or questions from the council?
Really, the, as far as the Ways and Means, uh, this was discussed, obviously, and, uh, we have used the abatement bonds in the past. It's, uh, is relatively new for the city to do that, uh, so there is some discussion So, there is some discussion that really is best left for the, my concern for the public hearing to get the full understanding, so.
There's no other questions or discussion? I'd entertain a motion to call for that public hearing?
I'll make a motion to call for the public hearing on proposed property tax abatements.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 29. Agenda number 29, consider the application for the exempt permit for Southwest Minnesota State University Foundation for an event on October 1st, 2016. Any questions on this? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll note the abstention. Agenda item number 30. Agenda number 30, consider the application for exempt permit for Southwest Minnesota State University Foundation for December 7th, 2016. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Remove.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll note the abstention. Agenda number 31. Agenda number 31 is Commission Liaison Reports. From my part, the Regional Development Commission does meet this coming Thursday, Thursday of this week. The Fire Relief Association did have their quarterly meeting this morning. I had a conflicting meeting at that time, but Mr. Melbrook was at that meeting and I believe one of the things that was discussed or will be, need to be addressed is the identification of the trustees of the city. Tom has been a member on the Board of Trustees, has been defined in their bylaws. So, now with the change that we have with City Clerk, Finance Director, that needs to be defined in their bylaws, is it the City Clerk? Is it the Finance Director? Tom, did I explain that correctly?
Correct.
So, that would be probably forthcoming in a bylaw amendment later this year. So, anything else, Tom?
We have a positive first quarter, so we have a good to see for a large percentage of...
Thank you. Craig is not here this evening, so Larry?
The only one on mine that meant is Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission. Tentatively, an open house scheduled for June 7th. Taking reservations for ice time starting June 1. Pretty much the way it sits right now, I think all the Monday through Friday ice time is pretty much spoken through from daytime hours, if you want real early morning or late evening ice time or some of that available yet. Video boards due in May 9th. Fences going up, pump house and water lines going in at the ballpark. The open house starts at 11:30, 12:30. Public tours, 1:30 to 5:30. September 8th is the grand opening scheduled for right now. That's all I can read out of these notes.
That's it? Thank you, Larry. Glenn?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow.
Okay. John?
Ways and Means reacted on tonight. Utilities Commission, I was not able to attend the meeting.
And David?
Airport Commission that last Tuesday, I couldn't be there because of overlapping customers.
Helene?
The Adult Community Center Commission did not meet this past month. And then I just will mention that at the Community Services Advisory Board, our entire meeting, which is an hour meeting, was turned over to Superintendent Scott Munson, who was invited to give a presentation about the school referendum that is coming, will be voted on, oh, May...
Ben?
Dan, thank you. And I just wanted to say that he has done a fantastic job of getting information out to the public. He's scheduled several meeting times with the public and has had radio time and he's been on the News and View Show and, which is shown 13 times a week, which he was surprised at. But anyway, he has been working very, very hard on this as well as the school board. So, it'll be, he's taken, he took on a big responsibility there along with everything else that he has to do.
Okay. Thank you, Helene. We'll move on then to the next agenda item. Agenda item number 32, Councilmember Individual Items. Larry, do you have any?
I have none.
Glenn?
I have none.
Helene?
I've been receiving a lot of calls from the public on different issues that I really can't bring up at this time, but we'll let everyone know in another time.
Okay. David?
Couple of things this morning. I attended a conference, a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities and the prevailing atmosphere from officers and lobbyists is essence. Terribly hopeful that the Coalition's priority items are going to get adopted or adopted in a significant way in the remaining weeks of legislative session. Second, I'm going to overhear this evening, attended the open house of a Minnesota Island community safety assessment project. Vibrated data gathering about average speeds, 35th percentile speed, flash data, which are part of the process they laid out to start, to improve specific recommendations.
Okay. Thank you, David. John?
Yes. Today, Minnesota Commissioner for Minnesota Housing was in Marshall and their organization along with Greater Minnesota Housing Fund and USDA put on a dialogue concerning housing in this region. And it was very well-attended, a lot of discussion, talking about workforce housing, affordable housing, market rate housing, how do we handle it? How do you get the funding and quite a few different other subjects? It was a very good, lengthy discussion with a lot of input from a lot of organizations in the regions. Good meeting.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move then to agenda item number 33. Staff reports starting with Ben.
Thank you, Honorable Members of the City Council. Just a couple of updates for you. A lot of work going on related to preparation of a number of bondage, bondage packages that we have. So, Ways and Means covered not only abatement bond, but a couple of other ones with that. So, we're looking at a set sale date on the 26th. They are also having, as was indicated, Ways and Means has got three meetings all in one month, so they're putting in extra work, I guess, with that because we're reviewing some of the capital equipment needs as well. So, more information and details will be coming to the city related to those actions. We did have, we are dealing with a number of personnel items led by the Human Resources Manager Dubs, who is getting trained in here a little bit on running the meetings. Software, it's fairly simple. I think it will work out fine picking up on it. But the, so obviously, there are some key positions that she's continuing to work on initiating with the Director of Community Services, the Finance Director, and then a whole host of other ones, including the assisting on the City Administrator search process. But we are also interviewing, we have been interviewing this week for the Assistant Finance Director position, and so hope to have some new information on that. And there's also the arena positions that have been underway for interview as well that are some critical ones to get wrapped up. And I'm not sure how much, Glenn, but we got a lot of detail work related to trying to tie up some items on the Sports Center project that's going on and the number of legal-related items to try and get cleaned up. We are having ongoing, still having more administrative meetings kind of related to the Market Street Mall project and have seen some preliminary building plans coming through. So, nothing official really to go through this evening, but the project's still live at this point and getting worked through. Cal Brink, the Economic Development Director is involved in that and a number of other projects, including some exploratory housing, potential projects like Mr. De Kramer alluded to that might be coming up in the future. So, that's all for this evening unless there's any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few notes on carryover projects from last year. The contractors are working on the backstops and fencing at the Ball Field. The pumping station and piping going to the high school is underway. Contractors moved back in on the Saratoga Street Bridge project and we would expect that after the middle of May, we would be beginning the surfacing work. That's about when the asphalt plants open up. There's some discussions about the ownership of the facility there as well. We have new projects coming forward. The Western Mental Health Facility, we've had indications for the Market Street Mall project being discussed. So, a lot of spring construction activities going on. If anyone has any questions on any specific project, just ask. We also will be starting out at the Commerce Industrial Park with the project plans being almost completed for that acceleration, Helene, as well.
Questions for Glenn? John?
I understand the rescheduling of the work at Independence Park. Is that correct?
Yes. That'll be rescheduled. We intended to have it either done for the removal of sediment by April 15th or not begun until after the middle of September. So, the contractor will be out there working on some tiling, some drainage tiling around the facility, but the sediment removal won't begin until mid to late September.
Okay. Any other questions for Glenn? Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think we've pretty much covered some of the legal issues already. Glenn indicated and Councilmember De Kramer, MMU Water Main Project for Bruce Street. That project was just let this week. The contracts have been approved, so I would expect to see some instructions start on that project soon. As I indicated a week ago, the Commissioner's inspection of the Marshall Hotel took place May, I'm sorry, April 5th. We all had an opportunity to walk through that facility and check it out. I think that's about all for now. Nothing.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? If not, then we'll move on to agenda item number 36. The pending items for your review, any comments on the pending agenda items? If not, agenda item number 37. The information items, including the building permits and minutes of various meetings. Which brings us then to agenda item number 38.
Remove.
The upcoming meetings. And then agenda item number 39, Larry, is consider adjourning this meeting. Motion by Larry, seconded by David. Discussion? We'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank you.